Thank you, Mr. Ansel Goa. So excited for this. We'll let you continue.
You all can see more of this choir and our band next Wednesday at McCaffrey Middle School for the schoolwide, I'm sorry, the district-wide music showcase. The concert band, the band concert will be at 5 o'clock and the choir concert will be at 6 o'clock. All right. All right, on the way out, you all can pick up one of these, okay?
Yes. Thank you so much. That was amazing. And thank you, parents, for coming out this evening and allowing your children to perform for us. I felt the school's spirit here. Stingers, that was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Awesome. Good job. Great job, guys. Good way. Good job, guys. Sure, grab your treat bags. Yeah, ladies, I don't grab them. Come on, grab your treat bags.
You're a fan. Leadership.
When's the leadership people go?
Do you want to let them go and then?
Yeah, so then you have them do it too, then we'll do the-
They will do the board meeting. Sure.
All right, we also, our student presentations, we have one more from McCaffrey Middle School. We have our student leadership team tonight. Want to come on up to the podium? Thank you. Is your mic, you should be able to control the, yeah.
Okay, so leadership has done a lot of activities in this year and in August.
Is it not on?
Close that door.
There's a little hole.
Got it. There we go.
I am Jordan and I am here to present the past few months of progress at McCaffrey Middle School. In August, we had our Night at the Doghouse, which was an opportunity for students and parents to meet the new principal at the school and for new students to see them Caffrey campus for the first time. And then Back to School Night was on August 25th. In September, we had our school fundraiser, which ended at September 14th, and the funds were used for Renaissance activities and positive students rewards. Parent Lunch Day was on September 16th, where parents were able to come onto campus and enjoy lunch with their kids and play some fun backyard games. Start with Hello Week was a foundation that encouraged students to open up to each other and try to help each other, make more friends and make sure nobody is excluded. And then Hispanic Heritage Week was entirely organized by student leadership. It was a found, it it was run and we did a bunch of Spirit Days that helped celebrate Hispanic heritage from September 26th to 30th. And then in September volleyball and cross-country also started for the students.
In the month of October, we had a Red Ribbon Week celebration with lunch activities and Spirit Days every day of the week. Then Unity Day on the 19th, we wore orange in support of school unity. The eighth, then the eighth grade boys and girls basketball team started and played throughout December. In November, the SDC classes put together a friendship group soup with the soup being prepared, prepared by the students for the entire staff. We had the mac and cheese donations where we had a goal of 210 boxes and reach an amount of over 500 boxes. We had a week off for our Thanksgiving break and then we had parent conferences at the end of November. In April, or in the month of December, the 5th through the 9th, we had a toy drive. It was a joy effort with CSD Fire Department. The ninth was the winter dance for the seventh and eighth grade. The 16th, we had a Renaissance rally for both seventh and eighth grade where we handed out over $3,000 worth of prizes. And January is when we started the seventh grade boys and girls basketball season and that started on the 23rd.
And most of the February events were actually pushed back to March because of the horrible weather we got. In March 5th through 10th, eighth grade was at Washington DC and we are going to start an Easter donation drive to help kids at the Children's Hospital have a fun Easter basket and have some joy during that time. Next week is our Spirit Week of the seventh versus eighth grade all week. Activities each day at lunch will help some friendly competition and we're going to have Spirit Days where our homeroom participators will be counted. And then our Neon Blacklight Dance is on March 24th. It'll be the last dance of the year for our seventh graders.
In April, our Spring Bay will be from the first to the 10th and the trimester to Renaissance Rally will be the 19th of April where we will celebrate academic success with a carnival at McCaffrey. In May, on the 12th is a student parent lunch day. And then on the 15th through the 19th is Staff Appreciation Week where the students will show appreciation to McCaffrey Middle School staff. The 31st is the eighth grade promotion and then for our last day of school is on June 1st.
Thank you so much. Very informative and great speaking skills. Thank you.
Thank you, leadership class there for informing us on the activities for the school year for McCaffrey. We will now move on and we'll do the board meeting protocol.
All right, thank you. Our meeting is being recorded and it's open to the public and the meeting's being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comments, they are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item up to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a public comment via Zoom, notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom and please include the agenda item and use the, by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed. You'll be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. And to make a public comment in person, there's public comment cards over there by the doors and please indicate the item you would like to address and that would go to our board meeting assistant, Ms. Bach. Email public comments can be emailed to the superintendent email 24 hours before the board meeting will be posted to the website. We did not receive email comments. Board vote and connectivity, each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should the board member attend meeting remotely or lose connectivity, the meeting would be delayed by five minutes and regular board meetings will be adjourned by 10:30.
Moving on from the agenda, we did in closed session, there was no action taken. So we'll go on from there and then we will go to action item. E, presentation?
Yes, so we, we of course had the Valley Oaks Band Choir in the middle school leadership team and so now we're on to school site administrator calendars. And so those are in your packet. We brought that back. It's been a long time since they've been in your binder, but they are here for you and the first one is Fair Sight Elementary and Early Learning Center. Ms. Nijar? Thank you very much. We have Greer Elementary. Ms. Semenich.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? There are so many things happening in April. One of the favorites I have to say is Kona Ice. May or may not be my favorite, but it is a family and child favorite or school. We also have Picnic in the Green and we're piggybacking Open House again this year right after that for families. That seemed to work really well for everyone. We have a talent show coming up as well and everyone is excited about that. It's gonna be really fun.
Thank you. Lake Canyon Elementary, Ms. Papino. Okay, thank you. And Marengo Ranch, Ms. Papino.
Ms. Papino, if you could please speak into the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. At Marengo Ranch, we also have sixth graders going on the canoe mobile trip. They're very excited about that. And field trips to UC Davis for our fifth grade students. And again, we're very excited that Character Counts is coming back.
All right, thank you. McCaffrey Middle School, Mr. Castillo.
I think I don't want to, I'm not going to highlight spring break. I think everybody enjoys that part, so I'll leave that one out. One of the main highlights that we have right now, of course, is the Environmental Club that's going to count the Consumers River Preserve from 12 to 4. We are also right now trying to lock in a date for our virtual parent meeting for incoming seventh graders. And we're also preparing to help our eighth graders transition into ninth grade. So that's what we're trying to finalize those couple of dates. And of course, we are now currently preparing our S-Back testing for the week of the 24th and going into the first couple of days of May.
Thank you. River Oaks, Ms. Homsdus.
Okay, at River Oaks, we have several things going on as well. We, I wanted to highlight, we have no problem swimming away in the canoes. We, our sixth grade will be going as well to the canoe mobile. And we also have our fourth grade team spent many hours, their teachers spent timeless hours over the summer preparing for their Sutter's Fort trip. They had to go and learn and prepare and do all of these trainings just so the students could go. So our families and our students are very well prepared and our teachers are very excited for this trip. It's now a day trip, but it's fully packed. They go into the evening with that. And we also have hosting by our PTA an outdoor movie night. So we're excited to bring families onto the campus and have a relaxing evening together.
Thank you. Valley Oaks, Mr. Nelson.
All right, I'd like to highlight probably what is our biggest event of the year in April, April 27th. We have a combination of Children's Day, Dia del Niño and Open House all in one. So it starts at 5:30, we have student presentations, grade level presentations. Sometimes there's songs, sometimes there's dance, sometimes there's song and dance. And following that, we have the, the Open House and it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful evening. We have had upwards of a thousand people attend in, in previous years. So it's, it's a wonderful event. We invite you to, to come out. There'll, there'll be some food and obviously some great student presentations as well.
Thank you, administrators. Fun times coming, April, May and June, right? Yes, so now if you, we can move to, yeah.
Okay, next we'll be moving on to the public comment for topics not on the agenda. We have three speakers so far. So we will start with Galene Gomez.
Good evening. Get my notes up here. Hello, I'm Galene Gomez and I'm the PE teacher at Valley Oaks and currently serving as G EFA president. I'm here to speak to you tonight about combo classes from a variety of perspectives that I've been able to experience personally. I've taught one. I've had my child in one and I currently teach many classes and grade levels that are affected by them. And I can tell you unilaterally, it's not working. In the past, our district has made combo classes as a last resort. We might have had one or two. And that was often also when funding was scarce. Now it seems to be like it's part of our service plan and enrollment strategy and it shouldn't be. It doesn't serve our students well. We have the money. Based on our current budget report, our district shows an increase of $9 million in revenue this year. $3 million of that to be added to the district savings account to increase the reserve to 14.2%. I would encourage you to ask those in charge what the average cost of a teacher in our district is. And then think if we were to dissolve those combo classes and afford an additional five-ish teachers, does that come anywhere close to the $3 million we're putting in our, toward our reserve? The answer is no, it doesn't even take a third of that. Please do your research. Last meeting I attended, there was a discussion by the board about fourth grade and fourth grade was highlighted across the district as being problematic in the sense of scores and having sustained, having sustained substantial learning loss from the pandemic. It was highlighted as one of the most affected grade levels and I will tell you that this grade level is also being affected. It's being hit hard by combo classes. We received millions of dollars in Esser funding. What better way to use the remaining funds for their intended purpose, which is to help students? Whether it's one times, one-time monies or, sorry, on one-time monies or ongoing funding, we have the money to say, no, not here, not in Galt, not our students. Please demand that our district leadership dissolve combos and demand a better delivery of services to our students. As board members, you have that power. Please exercise it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will go on to Kim Lozama.
Good evening. I'm Kim Lozama. I teach sixth grade at Valley Oaks. I have been in a couple of grade levels where our students have made great progress on standardized tests. And each time the district leadership has asked us what we did to get those students to improve. And each time, one of the main things that we told them is that we had small class size that year. This never seems to be the answer they are looking for, but hoping for an answer that doesn't cost money is naive. We have all seen the results of low class size and it can't be ignored. Combo classes are utilized solely to pack more students into classes and reduce the number of teachers needed in each grade level. That is their purpose. However, when you decide that this services, excuse me, this savings is the priority, you are simultaneously deciding that student growth and achievement, achievement is not the priority. It is important that you know this because as we begin creating more and more combo classes, you need to be prepared for the consequences of this decision. By making the decision to have combo classes, you are deciding that the savings are worth sacrificing student growth and achievement. Of course, there are going to be individual parents who feel that the combo class worked well for their individual child. However, our job as a district is to make sure that we have a strong educational program for all of Galt students and the combo classes are not that. Combo classes purposely create large class sizes in the grade level to save money. They make what is already a difficult job twice as hard. Mastering and teaching one grade level's curriculum is already an extremely hard job and now you're requiring one teacher to master and teach two. Because each grade level has their own unique standards and curriculum, there is no double dipping or teaching one thing to both grade levels. Each grade level has to be taught their individual curriculum. This means that each grade level gets half of the instructional time. This means that students in the combo class must be able to work for half of the day by themselves without teacher guidance. These classes must be made up of the most capable and independent students in the grade level because their direct instructional time is already cut in half. They cannot afford to be students who are pulled out of the classroom for any kind of support. Because they are required to work independently for much of the day, they cannot be behavior issues or lack motivation. They must be independent workers and learners who can teach a lot of the curriculum to themselves. As if this wasn't bad enough, when there's, then there's what happens to the rest of the grade level, the students not in the combo class. This leaves the least independent and least proficient learners in the remaining classes. The remaining classes are filled with all of the behavior issues and students who need additional help and require the most time and attention. Combo classes are bad for all, but a few students who could probably learn independently under any circumstances. Combo classes have a myriad of unintended consequences. But after hearing all of the information tonight, you will not be able to say that these consequences were unintended consequences. To continue with combo classes will mean that you went into it fully aware of the consequences. To entertain this idea at a time when the district has excess COVID money and reserve money is incomprehensible, shortsighted and irresponsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Going on, Amy Mangeli.
Good evening. My name is Amy Mangeli and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Valley Oaks Elementary. I also serve as the vice president of the union. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of my colleagues on the topic of combo classes. As we are a district with many combo classes on the horizon, you, the board, might be wondering what the positives and negatives of having combo classes are. Allow me to break it down for you. We'll start with the positive. Yes, that was singular because there is just one positive. It is a fiscally smart decision to pack kids in rooms and allow class sizes to be as large as the contract allows. That's it. The positive is that it costs less money. The downside to this positive is that we are talking about kids and these decisions are at the expense of the education we are providing to our children. So I guess the fiscal gain isn't really a positive after all. Now for some more negatives. A few years ago, I was a teacher of a combo, four, five combo. So I'll speak to that experience. Combo teachers are assigned the massive undertaking of teaching two grade levels. My classroom was packed with 30 students. I was expected to manage two grade levels of students and their wide range of individual needs. The expectation was for me to internalize the curriculum for two grade levels, one of which was a grade level I had never taught and had to learn the standards for. This is not a realistic expectation. I was expected to divide myself between the two grade levels in terms of attending grade level planning sessions. This meant I was always missing out on something, which meant the kids were always missing out on something. As the combo teacher, I constantly felt torn and unable to truly contribute to either grade level. Was this good for kids? No. This year I am not the combo teacher, but rather a part of a grade level that has a four, five combo. While I only teach one grade level, it is filled with downsides as well. First of all, the grade level is decimated. There is one less teacher to contribute and plan with. The entire grade level in the, in terms of the program we can build is fractured. Our classes have 30 plus students. When that is the case, it just becomes crowd control with a sprinkling of education. This means all classes are affected. Was this good for kids? No. Who benefits from grade levels? Who can plan together? Kids do. At the last board meeting, you heard map data reported. There is a district, there is a direct correlation between growth on map and class size. Low class size equals student growth. It's a win-win. I want to encourage the board to question why we have so many combo classes slated for next year. Why is this how we are serving Galt's children? Is this truly the best way to serve our students who are still struggling from all the academic losses they incurred during COVID? The reserve must be 3%. The projected reserve for next year will be 14.2%. Let's invest in our children. Thank you.
Another speaker, Tammy Partridge.
It was asked to address the board this evening on behalf of colleagues. I am a special education teacher, so it is kind of funny to think of combo classes when I teach seven grade levels, but you know, so this is a general colleague. I'm writing in response to the idea of combination classes. I was so excited for this opportunity. I love the idea of a multi-age peer supportive group to create a real family of diverse learners. I have a perfect mix of motivated and creative thinking students. What a perfect year. As the year has progressed, it can still look like the perfect year. My students have amazing scores across all curricular areas, but I now see that my students are actually missing out. The daily time needed for two math curricula alone takes away from many other important areas. My students are missing out on the enriched learning experiences in the My students are missing out on the enriched learning experiences in the other subjects like science and literature. We no longer have the time for the activities that help build relationships and self-confidence. Our class looks like a great idea. The reality is for these students, it isn't. The time spent in a classroom where two curriculas are being taught means that there are many more important things not being taught. These students are our future leaders and they aren't getting the same opportunities as their grade level peers. In a combined grade structure, students do not receive the personalized learning, support and opportunities of their peers. We are letting them down.
Thank you. Is there any other guest speakers? Seeing none. We'll move on to. El Cap goal number one.
All right, so we have a report for you tonight. Program report for the month is special education. Donna Whitlock.
I'll get us started and I'd like to call Kuljeet Nijar. And Stephanie Gutierrez are going to actually do the presentation, but I wanted to start out by saying. As the director of special education, I work with an amazing professional team of our program specialists. And Kuljeet, this year, not only does she head up preschool special education, but middle school as well. Who's you don't see up here is Leanne Van Cleve, who is our behavior analyst. She works with the behavior services, but I'm going to hand it over to these two ladies to. Let you know about our special education program for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. So good evening and thank you for allowing us this opportunity to share with you our programs within the district. As Donna mentioned, I'm Kuljeet, well, of course you know, I'm Kuljeet Nijar. I wear multiple hats in this district in addition to being the principal at Fair Sight, system principal. At McCaffrey, I'm also been serving as a special education coordinator for the district and my colleague is.
Hi, good evening. I'm Stephanie Gutierrez. I'm the program specialist for special education for our district.
See if I can figure out how to use this thing. Oh, so Donna mentioned that really there is a team of us at the district level that. Is supporting all of our students and staff and families. In addition to us three, there's also Leanne Van Cleve, who's our behavior analyst. But more importantly, there are our site-based teams. And these are our professionals, our phenomenal educators that are in the trenches every day supporting our students and families. And as you can see, we have resource specialists. So the, yeah, we have a couple, yeah. I thought you guys were here for the presentation, but. So we have a resource specialist at every site. We have 19 special day class teachers. These are teachers that teach the core content areas. 11 speech therapists, five school psychologists, one adaptive PE specialist. Four registered behavior technicians and 68 instructional assistants. And so you can see it does take a village to be, to support all of our community. So when we, when we think about special education, the law that governs what we do is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And this law provides guidance for, on a broad range of topics ranging from referral consent. Assessments, services, discipline, and also due process procedures. And the law really does require us to look at how can we provide a free and appropriate education to students that have been identified to have a disability. And so this is just some general information. To qualify for an IEP, which is an individual educational plan. A student has to have a disability in one of, in at least one of these categories. And they range from autism, deafness, hearing impairment, multiple disabilities, other health impairments. Speech and language impairment, visual impairment, emotional disturbance, intellectual disability, orthopedic impairment. Specific learning disability and traumatic brain injury. So these are all the areas that we assess to determine eligibility. So once a child is found eligible for special education services. The placements or their services are then considered in terms of what is the intensity of services that are needed. Sometimes there is a misconception that a child that is on a, that is receiving special education services is placed in a program. But really the, the conversation is how, how intense are those services? Cause our goal is always to educate the child in the least restrictive environment, which is in the general education classroom. However, if a student does require more intensive services, then we look at special day class programs. These are self-contained classrooms that you have on a public school campus. There will be times when we can't meet the needs of students, whether it's behaviorally or developmentally. And then we look at specialized schools or non-public schools. We have families and students, students that. For medical reasons can't be on any campus, whether it's a campus, one of our campuses or even a specialized school. So we then provide services in the home. And at the most extreme and most restrictive are placements that are residential. So these are students that not only are they educationally needing more intense wraparound type services, but they also need placement for home. For the home piece as well, so they would be in residential placements. Okay, so this is really the, the continuum of services that we always consider when we're looking at a student that's on an IEP.
So when we're looking at the students in our district and who we're serving right now. This data is as of March 1st in our district, the actual students we have on IEPs. So our district is currently serving 663 students on active IEPs. We have an additional 57 students who were in the process of assessing. So they may become eligible or may not. Given that our total enrollment or pre-K through eighth grade is 3,521. That comes out to 18% of our population is right now being serviced through the IEP process. So through special education. And just to give you a comparison, countywide, our services, Sacramento County. Those students are being served at about 13% in our neighboring counties. Are kind of other neighboring counties besides Sacramento. San Joaquin County is about 13% of their population at special education and Placer County is 12%. Receiving special education. Now it is important to know, we have seen a slight increase, of course, since COVID, which we anticipated. And the next slide will also describe the types of programs that these students are receiving. So the majority of our students in Galt fall under four disability categories. And Kuljeet kind of listed the 13 eligible eligibility categories. Our students are really falling under the first four. And the first is where the majority of our students are receiving services. And that's for students with speech and language impairment. So these are students with either an articulation disorder, meaning they can't produce sounds. Or with a language impairment, meaning they can't process language or express language. So when we think about that 18%, a large number of our students are being served in, again, the least restrictive environment. They're in general education classes and they're receiving speech services. The next category is specific learning disability. And that makes up 19% of our students. And that is students who have a reading disability, a math, a disability in math or writing. And they're serviced by our amazing RSP and SDC teachers. And they teach them the core curriculum or support them in their gen ed classes. The other two categories where we see the largest amount of students are autism and other health impairment. And these are spread through a variety of our service providers. The last category, which makes the smallest amount are what we call our low incidence disabilities. And that's deaf and hard of hearing students, emotionally disturbed, intellectual disabilities, visually impaired. Any of those other 13 categories only make up 3% of our population. Okay.
Right, so while IDEA is a very broad law covering multiple aspects of educating students with disabilities. I just wanted to highlight child find. So really this is the entry point for when we are looking or suspecting a student has a disability. It is a district's affirmative obligation to act on if they suspect a child has a disability. Right? And the way that, you know. This would come to our attentions would be if a parent has written a letter. We've, teachers have seen that the, the student is not making academic progress. We have partnerships with, at the Sacramento County Office of Education, so they will refer infants that are getting ready to turn three. And developmental screeners that we may have completed. So all of these things can trigger your district's responsibility to kind of, to move forward. To see if this student, a student has a disability. Okay. Your notes are different than mine. Alright. So while the, the law does highlight the need, the requirement for districts to act on a child find obligation. There is also language in the law that says we do need to try some general education interventions first. And the way that we have implemented that requirement is for our school sites to have. MTS teams or systems of support. So I'm sure everybody's familiar with the triangle, right? So essentially you have your tiered responses. Tier one would be the core instruction. That's high quality instruction, standards-based instruction and district adopted curriculum. And if students are not making adequate progress. The MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support teams can look at data to put into place some interventions. And so 80% of the, the students will progress with tier one interventions. And then 15 to 20% will need more targeted interventions. That's tier two. And then you have tier three, which is usually the 10 to 5%. And these are all steps that we take to have some data to show if a student is, maybe there's something else going on, why we're not seeing the progress.
So within our district, Kuljeet mentioned a little bit about the teachers that we have. We have a variety of programs along that continuum of services that she mentioned. So within the district, I'm just going to kind of summarize these. On every campus, we do have resource specialists who help students within the general education classroom on IEPs. We also have special day classes on every single campus. Some have the upper grades and some have both the lower grades and upper grades. Valley Oaks and Lake Canyon House, both the K3 and the 4-6 programs. Our other campuses in elementary just have the fourth through sixth grade. McCaffrey is lucky enough to have every program. And then we do have specialized programs like our autism programs. These programs focus on evidence-based practices for students with autism. And we do have also our intensive intervention program for students. Who need social emotional support and support with maladaptive behaviors. And the autism programs are housed on River Oaks only, as well as Farisite. And the II or intensive intervention program is housed at Greer and McCaffrey. So we also have, lastly, our living skills class. So for students with more cognitive delays, that's housed at Greer and McCaffrey as well. So we are able through these programs, either least restrictive resource, through our more intensive programs, like our special day classes. We're able to service the majority of the needs of the students we see in Galt. And then we have speech on every campus, so we're very lucky. And additionally, we have what are called related services. And related services are just corrective or supportive services that are required to assist a child to access their education. Or access their IEP. And these are just a small list of some of the related services that are available. These are things like physical therapy or occupational therapy. Transportation is one of our most used related services, as well as speech and language pathology. Educationally related mental health, which is counseling for our students. Adapted PE, we do have one adapted PE specialist in our district. Audiological services for our deaf and hard of hearing students. Vision services and orientation and mobility are some of those examples of related services. So that every student gets every need met through their IEP.
I was, the last slide before Kuljeet and Stephanie close it out and ask for questions. Our CBO Nicole Lorenz is going to go over the funding. It's multiple funding sources to provide services for special education.
So on this slide, we work out funding that's received specifically for special education, which is under the special education funding section. And then what non-special education funding section is, is the funding that's not specifically received for. Special ed under state or federal guidelines, but we use it to fund our special ed program. So what we receive for actual special ed are our federal IDEA grants. You learned that acronym tonight. For the 943,000. We also, under that, received some one-time federal grants. In, in response to COVID, it's the American Rescue Plan, just like the district received regular American Rescue Plan money. They also received supplemental special ed money, that's 183. Then recently, a couple of years ago, the state implemented the early intervention preschool grant. That's paid to us through our principal apportionment. And that's used at the preschool level for early intervention prior to being identified as special. And then the, the other chunk is the state AB602. And so that's the kind of like the LCFF of special ed. It's, it's the state bulk funding that goes to the SALPA, then gets distributed to each district under your SALPA. And so we get 1.1 million for that, for a total of 2.4 million in special ed funding. Well, it takes more than that to run the program. Almost every district, probably every district in the state has what they call encroachment. And so the program encroaches on the general fund or on other non-special ed funding to cover the costs. And so in the non-special ed funding, we use some Title I. We use, there's state mental health dollars that used to be coined just for special ed. And then they changed the law where you could use it for any student, they didn't have to be special ed. Some lottery money. And the big chunk, as you can see, is 5.8 million is a general fund contribution to the special ed program. For a total budget this year of 9.1 million.
And this is just a snapshot of our amazing teams. A large majority of our specialists, teachers, speech therapists, psychologists, as they did their. PDSA, their Plan Do Study Act on the Monday. For Planning Day, and we just want to thank them again. We, we can't do our jobs without them, so we wanted to highlight them as well tonight.
Take any questions that the board may, may have.
Just had one question on the Greer Elementary. And I'm sorry if you've mentioned this and I missed it. And the severely handicapped, is there only that program at Greer or does McCaffrey also?
Greer and McCaffrey both.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you so much and thank you, our support staff, our special education. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you, our support staff, our special education teachers here. Thank you so much for all you do for our students.
Ms. Bond, could we go offline and take a quick five-minute recess? Something's kind of, I just want to make sure the board knows, just so we're not distracted. There's something going on, but it is confidential, but we're just, so it's not continuing to everyone wonder what's going on here. So if we could go offline, take a five-minute recess.